Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the February 4th, 2013, meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceeding with the invocation offered today by Chaplain Michael Meyer of the Union Park Church of the Nazarene, which is located on Chickasaw Trail in east Orange County. The church has served the greater Orlando area for approximately forty-eight years. It provides many services to the community, including a food pantry, a school supply distribution center, and a drug rehab center. Chaplain Meyer has served as an associate pastor with the church for three years and as a new chaplain with the OPD. He states that having Chief Rooney and Captain Zuedo attend his ordination service last year was one of the greatest honors of his life. After the invocation, we'll be led into the Pledge of Allegiance today by Commissioner Gray. Everybody, please join me in standing.
May we bow our heads, please? Gracious and loving God, we thank you for this solemn day where we have gathered in these august chambers to exercise the duties of government. We recognize, Lord, that all authority comes from you and rests entirely on your shoulders, and then flows through these leaders you have personally appointed to accomplish this task. We thank you especially, Lord, for Mayor Buddy Dyer and each member of our city council and Chief Paul Rooney of the Orlando Police Department, who are the true gatekeepers of the city beautiful and have joined together this day in unity of purpose for the common good. Let them hear from your voice clearly, Lord, and bless each of them with the wisdom of King Solomon and the patience of your servant Job. We thank you, Lord, for their leadership, protection, and guidance and willingness to serve the citizens of Orlando with great distinction and resolve. Continue to bless this great city, Lord, and all who reside and visit here for your divine favor. We humbly beseech you, Father, and ask all in your precious name, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chaplain. All right, let's call the meeting order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Lyman?
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item for business is the consideration of the minutes from the workshop agenda review and city council meetings of January 28th, 2013. I'll take that as a second. Commissioner Sheehan moves. Commissioner Ortiz, second. On favor of motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. We have no presentations or recognitions today. How about that? So we'll go right into the mayor's update on Saturday, February 16th. Please join us at the Orlando Wetlands Festival at Fort Christmas Historical Park. We'll have a variety of hikes, bus tours of the wetlands, animal demonstrations, hayrides, a climbing wall, face painting, and Commissioner Sheehan's favorite, tree climbing. And speaking of wetlands, those of you who are participating in our Greenworks Orlando Interactive Forum may have an opportunity for a rare tour by answering questions and offering ideas on our green initiatives. You can earn points that can be redeemed for VIP tickets to Blues Biqueux, dinner at Fire Station One, or an airboat ride at the Orlando Wetlands Park. So go to cityoforlando.net to join the "How Do You Green?" conversation. Want to encourage everybody to join us for the State of the City address on Wednesday, February 27th at 10:30, right here in council chambers. Likewise, the Eighth Annual Neighborhood and Community Summit will be held on Saturday, February 23rd, from 7:30 to 2:15 at the Doubletree. And if you register by this coming Friday, it's only $5. Go to cityoforlando.net. Now, the much-anticipated Cupid's Undy Run will be this coming Saturday, February 9th, and you may join me and Belle Isle Mayor Bill Brooks as we run through downtown in our underwear to benefit the children's...
You said it real fast.
...teamwork foundation.
It takes a little longer to say that.
I can't figure it out. It's a five-hour event and a one-mile run, so there must be other activities involved. Last week, but it does go to benefit a good foundation. Last week, I joined with Onyx Magazine and I think most of our city commissioner was there to kick off Black History Month, and it was a really cool event. We honored the Florida Highwaymen, who are a group of African-American artists who were inducted into the Artists Hall of Fame in 2004 and have been nationally recognized for their paintings. There is an exhibit on view down in the rotunda with probably twenty or so pieces of their art. Last Wednesday, I had the opportunity to join with Chief Rooney and Commissioner Lyman, Commissioner Ings, as we opened the Southwest Community Police Office. Very nice building, very interactive building. Anecdotally, the folks that run the grocery store right next door said their shoplifting has gone down since the building has been in place, and I suppose if you're going to shoplift, you probably don't want to run out the front door right by an OPD substation, so I'm sure that's the case. Another interesting event from last week is I joined the Predators to announce another major event coming to downtown at the Amway Center. The Twenty-Sixth Annual Arena Bowl will be played on the 17th of August, and they usually do the league -- or the team with the best record, and they've only done neutral-site arena bowls a few times, but they were compelled to hold it here. And that goes along with so many of the great events that we're already seeing come to the Amway Center, the NBA All-Star Game last year, so we'll have the Arena Bowl this year. 2014, we had the second and third round of the NCAA Men's Basketball Tournament. We have a bid-in for the 2015 ECHL All-Star Game with the Solar Bears, and then we are bidding to host the NBA All-Star Game again in 2016, so a lot of great events at the Amway Center. I just want to highlight two things on the agenda. We have a grant that will further assist OPD in protecting our community against drunk drivers. DOT has awarded OPD $100,000 in grant funding to fund our DUI enforcement team. And then, secondly, on today's agenda is an item to use CDBG funds to replace the twenty-year-old Rosemont Playground. I know Commissioner Stewart has been a champion of that project. With that, we will move to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of the commissioners an opportunity to update you on things from their district and comment on items from the consent agenda. We rotate who gets to go first, and today it is District One, Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to talk about one agenda item, and that's B3. I would like to take the opportunity to congratulate Hunt Construction on being selected over four of their competitors to be our project manager for the Citrus Bowl renovation. As we all know, this venue is extremely important from a revenue generator standpoint for the city and for our area, so successful completion on budget, on time, and following our blueprint, our venue blueprint is going to be key. So while I congratulate Hunt, I also recognize that they were involved in the arena, and the arena was built successfully, but not without its issues. So they're a good company. We wouldn't have selected them if they weren't, but I'm going to take a little personal interest in this one and work through staff to make sure that we stay on time, on budget, because I just think it's so important that we get this one right and we do it right the first time. So with that, my apologies on the front end. Staff, I'll go gentle, but I will take an active role in this one because I just think it's that important. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Two. Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor, and I am going to accompany Commissioner Jim Gray on his feelings towards this particular project. We don't want to go -- we don't want to live through the same problems we lived through the first time around, and we will definitely keep an eye on everything that has to do with dispersments and everything else. On other items, I want to thank the staff from the Orlando Neighborhood Improvement Corporation for the hospitality given to me and my liaison officer last Tuesday when we attended a community meeting at the Holbrook Apartments. They're doing a great job managing the location, also providing free tax preparations for the residents, and they're working with their kids, so I'm really proud of what they're doing. Just wanted to bring that to light. Speaking of free taxes, preparation services, we also have free tax preparation for qualified individuals at the Englewood Neighborhood Center on Thursdays from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. and on Sundays from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. Those services are provided by the IRS-certified community volunteers. I had the chance to attend a salute-to-the-original Floridian highwayman reception here at City Hall last Tuesday. I'd like to congratulate Mayor Dyer, Onyx Magazine, and the Association to Preserve the Eatonville Community Incorporated for a great event. It was good to see Ms. Desne Young, who retired from the City of Orlando Permitting Department some month ago. She's doing really good, and she came up with a -- I believe she was really involved in this particular event, so I believe she's now working with Onyx Magazine. Is that right, Mayor? So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Three. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick things. Let me just thank all of y'all for your support of the Manillo Museum. This past weekend, we kicked off the Smithsonian African-American Art Exhibit. It was a really neat opportunity on Friday night. Had a great crowd, and we opened up on Saturday to offer that as a free opportunity for anybody in the community, and got a lot of positive comments. We also have offered the opportunity to anybody who'd like to come during the month of February to be able to go online and print out a coupon, present the coupon for two people, and they can come anytime while we're open during the month of February, with the exception of this weekend, because there's a major event over there on Thursday -- on Saturday and on Sunday. So please come. It's a great exhibit. I had a chance to take a couple of pictures of some items and send them out and paste them on Facebook, but there's just some -- photography was just incredible, and the other art was just as wonderful. So thank you very much, commissioners, and I hope you get a chance to go down there personally and see it. It's just really neat stuff. Also, I want to welcome the River of Life Christian Center to their new home in Rosemont, in the Rosemont neighborhood. We appreciate them moving in over there and taking over one of the areas. It's going to be a good addition to the community, not only because of the fact that they're a strong church, but also because they'll be a good influence on their neighbors. And then, this weekend is the Orlando Chili Cook-Off. I won't take all the thunder, except that I get a chance to officially pass over to Commissioner Sheehan the last year's apron. It's now been moved over to District Four from District Three, and so I present this to you, Commissioner Sheehan, as a reminder of the chili that you'll get a chance to enjoy after you feel better.
Thank you, Commissioner. Did you wash it?
It's all stained.
And I'm probably going to get heartburn, so thank you very much, Commissioner, for that.
I did wash it, and you'll get into here about that when you do.
Do appreciate that.
But they moved over to your district, and it's a great opportunity to help Special Olympics. Tonight, the College Park Neighborhood Association's having their annual meeting, I mean, their monthly meeting, and then tomorrow evening for the citizens of District Three, we'll be -- I'll be hosting a special meeting about the proposed changes on the southeast corner of OBT and Colonial, about the proposed Wawa over there and the additional retail and office properties. So those of you who'd like to come and look at that, it's right at the corner of District Five and District Three, and I thought I'd opportunity to have District Five -- I mean, District Three and be part of that. I know that Commissioner Lyman's got a meeting next week to do the same thing for her area as well. I've No Village after Hours this Thursday, February 7th, at Florida Hospital Innovation Lab. Please come out and check what's going on in I've No Village. Orlando Folk Festival is next weekend. Autobahn Park Garden District and Lew Gardens, you can tell the weather's getting nicer because there's just a bunch of stuff kind of going on. This morning, we had an OPD sustainability Workshop. Thank you, Mayor, for providing that guidance. I appreciate those who are involved. Chief Rooney, thank you, and John Ippe, and Rebecca, and all of those who are involved. And starting very early on that stage, just to introduce the concept of where we're going to go and how we're going to get there, and I look forward to, as Commissioner Gray has said, look forward to being involved in that personally. I'd love to make sure that we're answering all those questions well in advance and don't get -- bring our constituents along with it as we move forward. So thank you for your work. Thank you for your dedication as well. And then, along the same lines, as all of y'all know in council, the Citrus Bowl is just particularly special to me. The event was -- the Citrus Bowl was -- my father was one of the four or five founders on it, been involved, and as I've shared in the past, that we've been intricately involved in that. So having this happen, the last time we did this, my brother was on the commission, I think, and the city came in, I will tell you, and candidly saved the day, and this time we have another opportunity to do the same thing. And so I'm really thrilled about where we're going and thrilled about the leadership team that we have, so. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner, we'll move to District Four. Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and the beauty of technology is the ability to watch the workshops from home when you're not feeling well, so I thank you all for understanding, but I have had the flu for a couple of weeks, like everybody else, I think, in town, and I wasn't feeling well. Chief Rooney looked really good on television, and just had a couple of things to say. I think it's great that we're taking that investment from the green technology and savings and putting into the necessary infrastructure, and I think it really makes sense to bond while the interest rates are low. It really makes fiscal sense. And when people say, "Why don't you just give me a tax-free fund?", well, you know, we're having -- we need to invest in infrastructure, and if you ever look at the Orlando Police Headquarters when it's cold out, you can see the heat actually steam rising off the building because it's so inefficient. All the -- the heat is actually escaping from the top of the building, so if you don't think we need new police headquarters, check it out on a really cold day. I just have a couple of concerns, like my colleagues echoed, the -- what is the $40 million going to buy? Are we going to be -- what kind of best practices are we going to, you know, doing during that? And make sure we get the best bang for our buck, which I'm sure we will, but those are things I'm sure that my constituents will be bringing up as well. On item B3, I'd like to echo my colleagues' support for this agenda item and echo that, you know, the hotel industry is very supportive of the Citrus Bowl because it puts heads in beds, and while a lot of people say we have an antiquated football stadium and it doesn't do that much, what it really does is an economic impact from all those ballgames that we have, and it gets used year-round, so I think there's unfortunately a misnomer that the Citrus Bowl does not bring people in. It really does, and I think this is a great investment for our community. I will be at the Chili Cook-Off on Saturday. Thank you, Commissioner Stewart, and I will be bringing whatever Pepto-Bismol, or I know that you forewarned me, but I actually used to do this many years ago, back when it was at the History Center, when the History Center was in my district, so I will come prepared with my Alka-Seltzer, et cetera, but it's actually a great event. It'll be held on Saturday at Festival Park, and also on Sunday, the Asian Lunar New Year Celebration. It's the Year of the Snake. That's February 10th, Sunday, on Hillcrest from Hampton to end at Colonial Photo and Hobby. I know Mayor Dyer's coming. That's from 10:45 to 4:00 p.m., and that's really just the signature event from Old Fifty, so it's a busy weekend in District Four, lots of great events happening, and come on out to -- come on out and enjoy the events that are happening. Thanks, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to District Five. Commissioner Lyman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the workshop this morning. On my way home, I was thinking, Chief, that was the Downtown Summit of 2000, that we decided that you were living above your means in that office. It was a higher use and a cost for that building, so I just was trying to remember it, so that's what it was. But I came today, and Mayor Dyer's already identified all of the community events we had this past week, including, I believe, the Blueprint Office, where we had over 200 folks, I see you, Jose, that were there looking for jobs at the -- for the stadium. I did come prepared to vote no on B3 because I've been so disillusioned with Hunt since the Event Center. I'm not going to vote no, but I have to tell you, after a year and a half, when Hunt left, the Event Center, there were so many small businesses failed because they refused to use their influence as a contractor to help those small businesses outside of the people they hired, and their lack of community engagement. I was very disappointed that they rated number one, but after I looked at the rankings and what happened, they really did come out heads and shoulders above everybody else. But I hope this time that they would do a lot better in terms of being engaged with the community, engaged -- well, this is just a small piece of this stadium anyway, but I was just devastated when I saw their name. I didn't think we would ever do business with Hunt again. And they left, and a lot of small businesses went out of business because issues that were very easy to resolve that were left to policymakers and not contractors to heal. So I am still very bitter about what they did, and I understand with some of the conditions that have been imposed upon them this time, as the project manager should be a little better, I'm going to keep my eyes on them, as I do with all contractors, for the most part, in the city. I am not going to vote no, thanks to a number of staff and contractors over the last three or four days that have talked to me. I just was not happy about the way they left the Event Center and those small businesses. Everything we do is about small businesses, and when you do not engage small businesses and now you're going to supervise people and you have that same philosophy, that's not healthy to me. And I don't like it at all, but considering performance was a good Event Center. The construction was good. In the end, it all came out well, but there were just so many problems that legislators shouldn't have been engaged in, and we had to be engaged in. So those are my comments, Mayor. I am going to vote yes for B3, and it is like a gut twister for me. It's against everything in my heart, in my gut, in my head, everything, but that's the way it is. Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Six. Commissioner Ings.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say, "Go Ravens!", the Super Bowl champs for the 2012 season, and am I the only Raven fan up here today?
No, we're all Raven fans.
I am.
We saw the game. Even I watched it. Gosh.
So that was a great game, and we all knew that a Harbaugh bar was going to win the Super Bowl, and we're thankful that John was the one that was able to win. Also, I'd like to say thank you, Orlando, Orange County, and central Florida, and all around, for your continued support of the Zora Festival. This was the 24th Annual Zora Neale Hurson Festival of the Arts and Humanities in Eatonville, and obviously a great time served. And also, again, for the Southwest Substation, Police Substation. Thank you, Chief Rooney, and thank you Byron Brooks and Lori Botts and Mayor Dyer and the city council for your help and support in opening this great facility. The one great thing about this facility is that it is a standalone building, and it is a part of the community, and the community is certainly feeling attached to it already. We had great community support to come out for the event. And then, also, coming up in celebration of Black History Month, I'm hosting a Walk for Peace and Job Fair that's going to take place Saturday, and this shows February 25th, but I think Saturday is February 23rd, and it's going to be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Frontline Outreach is where we will start, Frontline Outreach Center, and then we're going to march along Goldwin to Hankins Park, and there we will have certain speeches concerning the black history and building community strength, and we will also have our jog fair. We're still looking for those businesses and corporations that would like to come out and be a part, set up a booth, so that people can be interviewed or directed to how to apply for certain jobs with your respective companies. So we're going to bring peace to our neighborhoods, communities, and around the world, and we're also going to help provide jobs for those that are unemployed. Clean the World, Sean Simpler had his Super Bowling Party fundraiser at Splitsville in downtown Disney yesterday. A great event. I wasn't able to attend. June, my wife, she went instead, and she just had a fantastic time and enjoyed the great festivities and making all kinds of connections with different companies and vendors as we're getting ready for the Red Tie Golf Celebrity Extravaganza that's coming up in August. And the last thing I have is remembering Haiti, survivors of the earthquake in Haiti in 2010. The event was held here in council chambers on Tuesday, the 29th, and a great event. I want to thank Luis Martinez, who's the multicultural director. He supplied the refreshments for the event, and he works out of the mayor's office, as well as Reginald McGill, Director of Constituent Services, who also works out of the mayor's office, and Mandy Soto, Director of Emergency Management. And then, of course, Reggie Colamon with Communications. Thank you so much for your help and assistance in making this a very successful event. Cynthia Wilson, my aide, and Jackie Cockerham, who also assist in my office, thank you for your help and assistance, too. A very special help thanks to Chesley Mesador, who is a student here at Valencia Community College, who was trapped in the rubble for 17 hours and thought that she and others would be buried alive, but they were able to survive. She's here in Orlando now, and she's telling her story concerning this event. Also, we had Anderson DeVallis, who was involved in the earthquake, and he gave testimony too concerning how he saw buildings just fall down and shake, and he said it was as if someone just took the earth, and as you shake a blanket and spread it over the bed, that's how the earth moved when a lot of destruction was taking place. So it was a very moving event, and we're just happy to do what we can to help those from the Haitian community and those in Haiti, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioners. Is there a motion to approve the consent?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheehan. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Without objection, let's recess the city council meeting and convene the CRA meeting. Thomas, we have one item.
You do. Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Our single item of new business today is regarding the I-4 Republic Drive CRA Plan Amendment. The purpose of this first proposed plan amendment to the I-4 Republic Drive redevelopment plan is to amend the redevelopment initiatives undertaken by the CRA for Republic Drive to include other various transportation-related items, pedestrian bridges and walkways, stormwater improvements, and the like. This is a statutorily required procedural matter, Mayor, and it anticipates and precedes a much more comprehensive proposal and presentation to be made, probably in a couple of months. But before we can do that, we need to move this proposed amendment to the MPB so that it can see if that -- the proposed amendment conforms with the comprehensive plan. So the CRA Advisory Board recommended that it's January 23rd, 2013, meeting, and staff requests today that the CRA for the I-4 Republic Drive redevelopment plan to the Municipal Planning Board to review for conformity with the comprehensive plan.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there discussion? Hearing on, on favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. For the business, Thomas?
There is none. Thank you.
And we'll adjourn, without objection, we'll adjourn the CRA meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Bringing us to hearings number one. You want to just read the title of that, Madam Clerk?
Hearing Approving City of Orlando Local Government Comprehensive Planning Certification Program.
In 2004, the city of Orlando became the first local government in the entire state of Florida to be certified by the state for growth management purposes. Under the terms of the certification, the city is required to track certain growth indicators every year, hold a public hearing to receive comments from the public, and then submit an annual report. This hearing is for that purpose, and I will open the public hearing for comments. Is there anyone that would like to comment on our Local Government Comprehensive Planning Certification Program? Then I will close the public hearing. Then, I will close the public hearing. I will ask if there are any comments from Commissioners. Then, I will accept the motion to, or take a motion to accept the Local Government Comprehensive Planning Certification Agreement 2012 Annual Report, and direct staff to transmit the final report to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ings. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
This is a public hearing regarding a notice of intent to consider a development agreement.
This is a public hearing required by statute as well regarding the city's notice of intent to consider the University of Central Florida Transportation Mitigation Development Agreement between Lake Nona, the city, and UCF. Notice of the hearing appeared in the Orlando Sentinel on January the 24th, 2013. I will now open this hearing for any public comment. I will close the hearing. Are there any questions or comments from Commissioners regarding the agreement? No council action is required at this time. A second public hearing on this agreement will be held at our next meeting on February 25th, at which time, the agreement will be considered for final approval. Madam Clerk, we'll move to hearings ordinances, second reading, number one.
An ordinance amending Chapter 12, Article 3, firefighter pension fund of the Charter of the City of Orlando, Florida pursuant to the authority contained in Chapter 2000-448 and Chapter 2009-268, laws of Florida. By amending Section 8, Pension for Death in Line of Duty; by amending Section 10, Pension for Death Not in Line of Duty; by amending Section 12, Service Retirement for Voluntary Retirement; by amending Section 14, Benefits Payable Upon Death of Member; by amending Section 26, Orlando Firefighter Share Program, Providing Perseverability and Providing Retroactive Effective Dates.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to a street name change, renaming Touchstone Drive, generally located between Grand National Drive and International Drive to Fun Spot Way, directing amendments to the official maps of the City of Orlando, Florida, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners.
Mayor.
Commissioner Ings on Fun Spot Way.
Yes, I'd just like to recognize John Airy, the owner, who's here. John, if you'd just stand so we could recognize you.
He would be the one in the Fun Spot shirt.
That's right, the one in the Fun Spot shirt.
He's huge. He's huge.
All right. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Fun Spot Way. All right. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance amending Chapter 55 of the Code of the City of Orlando, Florida entitled Regulation of Taxicabs, Limousines, Luxury Passenger Vehicles, Shuttles, and Other Vehicles for Hire by renumbering and amending definitions in Section 55.02, amending reference to vehicle for hire inspectors to vehicle for hire officers, providing an exemption for certain vehicles for hire, and deleting seller-of-travel exemption in Section 55.06, by amending required minimum liability insurance amounts in Section 55.12, providing a definition and permit fee, including a fleet increase for green taxicabs in Sections 55.02, 55.21, and 55.25, amending necessary requirements in Sections 55.20, 55.29, and 55.30, including grounds for revocation of a driver's permit in Section 55.34, and suspension of a vehicle permit in Section 55.35, rewording, clarifying, and amending language throughout chapter, and providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, codification, and an effective date.
Second.
I'll second you.
Let's see, who was from my right? Commissioner Ortiz?
Ortiz.
Okay. Commissioner Ortiz moves. Adoption, Commissioner Linum seconds. Anybody from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida rezoning certain land generally located north of East Livingston Street, east of North Magnolia Avenue, south of East Amelia Street, and west of Ruth Lane, comprised of approximately 5.2 acres, from O1THP in part, R2BTHP in part, MXD1THP in part, and O3T in part, to planned development district with the traditional city overlay district in part, and planned development district with the traditional city and historic preservation overlay districts in part, providing conditions of the PD zoning district, directing amendment to the official zoning map, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. That concludes the official portion of our program. Thank you for tuning in at home.